I'm officially calling to order the November 5th meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee meeting. And I want to thank 1623 Studios for taping our meeting tonight.
And the cameraman, Avi Urbis.
And the cameraman, Avi Urbis. So we're gonna get right to it, it's after 6:30, so do we have any public comment? No, alright. We do not have Spencer, our student reporter. We will move on to chairman's report. Our chairman Shannon Erdman is not here tonight, so I will pass along that we are working on concluding Pam's evaluation. We still have a couple trickling in. And our fearless leader has misplaced hers, but I think she is on, I think it's on the mend, so that's all good. So we'll get that moving. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have two sets of minutes, we have October 10th and October 15th.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda second.
And I need to abstain from the first.
Okay.
Did you have that just given?
Yeah, okay.
Missed a question? Is there out-of-state travel here? Because I didn't see it.
It's just there's a standing item, but there's nothing to it.
Okay, great.
What was, is, I think I already, I think I have to abstain from the first for October 1st.
Okay.
Is that one seven minutes?
So Warnock, October 1st.
Yes.
Abstain, and then Weld as well for the first. Okay. Julie noted. Consent agenda is being approved. So this section's noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Alright. Consent approved, okay. Subcommittee reports, elementary facilities, building committee, Annie, or Caroline and Annie? How are things going?
Still on time on budget. Steel was going up.
We have an actual building.
It's really cool. I'll take a peek over there. I have not been over there.
We did do a tour, we did the school building committee tour at 3:30 yesterday. Jake and Alba, no Manchester reps. But it was really impressive, you know. All our project team reps were there to escort them and give them a lay of land. It is, it's been incredible what they've gotten done in a week. It looks like we're.
And just kudos to who we're talking.
There has not, to my knowledge, been any, I mean, they delivered that steel, upstreet's going the wrong way. It's crazy how on top of everything everybody is. And for, we know that people like to complain, and I have not heard one thing, so.
Good.
That's town, everyone working together is really pretty huge.
I'd spoken with one of the nearest to Butters, and they said while the building was bigger than they had anticipated in real life, they were also pleased with the progress and just the communication, and it's moving smoothly.
Right.
Can't say enough to for the town department to do regular stop-ins, fire and police, they pop into the trailer, not to be helpful.
Right.
Check in to see if there's any need. And really, the PD, Manchester Police Department did all of the organization for the traffic reversals and the no parking notices. So they have been a tremendous partner in this, and they have been very complimentary with the project team as well. So it's really nice effort and collaborative, collaborative effort on everyone's part.
So it's good news.
It is, that's awesome.
The other thing that people should know is that as the bids come in, W2 Rich has been working with all of the bidders to kind of, how do I want to phrase that? Negotiate down the costs. So we're, we're getting good reports from where we are against budget, and it's, gives me great confidence in the work that they're doing and that they're really representing our best interests. So I think the committee is pleased with what they see, and I think you guys, you want to speak to that a little bit about the process, but it's been a relief.
They're extremely professional, extremely experienced.
Yeah.
They've done this a lot, and we have, they're a very strong team. There's not too many obstacles in the operation, they do really well.
Right.
So we're reading that, it's, so far, so good.
That's great.
It's still early in the process, but you should, if you get a chance to just drive by and see.
Yeah.
It's been, I think, today is day seven of steel.
Okay.
Going up, and it's, you can see the entire outline of the building, of the school. So, seven days, they, they make, they're, they're going even quicker than they expected, so.
They thought it was eight days, right?
Uh, no, I think, you know, normally it takes several weeks, but they're, they're thinking they're gonna be done quickly.
That's great.
If you, and if you ever watch them put it up, it's amazing. It is amazing.
Is there an opportunity coming in the next couple of weeks, or is there a point where we can, as a committee, maybe walk through, like an evening or something like that, or maybe not an evening, but, you know, or?
Trying to think.
Like a morning walk-through?
They like us there at 3 o'clock because the guys are clearing off the site, so
Okay, right.
There's not too much action for us to be walking around under.
Right, okay.
Probably, just about any day.
Okay, alright.
Let's see when they're gonna line up the next, do they, do they pick a date for the next walk-through?
No, I mean, the theory was maybe there'd be a monthly opportunity for building committee members to come by.
Right, that's, yeah, that's.
And so, I don't think we have another one picked, but I'm sure it's really not too hard towards the end of the day to set one up.
Okay.
And if you're there while they're.
Or maybe we could tag team with the building committee?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great.
Let me reach out to them and see if they, when they're thinking about, what they, what date they may be thinking about for the next formal walk-through.
Right.
If it's too far out, we can squeeze something in. I mean, you can come by any day, I can take you out.
Right, right, okay.
They usually leave a couple of windows, you can see quite a bit of it just from Main Street, at Memorial, at Glass hallway.
Okay, yeah.
And they take down the blankets for us so that we can peek through.
Cool. Very exciting, alright, anything else with that?
Yep, you might want to add, November 20th is the date for the all-school meeting at Memorial, where the project team is going to make a presentation. It's the curriculum integration, so the Durham Whittier reps and J.C. Javon working together to do some posters and a video. So they're gonna do a mini lesson within the town meeting. So that might be a good day, actually, to see them present, and then we could do a little bit of a walk-through.
So this is for the town meeting that night in Manchester?
This is the class meeting.
A class meeting?
The school town meeting.
The town meeting is November 19th.
Okay.
Sorry.
No.
The K-5 kids are gonna have their school town meeting.
What time, is that usually the mark?
It is, I'm gonna see if I plugged in.
Okay.
They're gonna send us a meeting invite, and I'll make sure that gets forwarded to you. Do you have it in yet, Avi?
Nope, so that's like a Monday, right?
To Wednesday.
No, it's a Tuesday.
Tuesday, then I can.
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, thank you.
No, Wednesday is.
Okay. Right. Okay, cool, alright, anything else with that, good? Okay, moving on, we're gonna move to finance committee. Shannon is not here, Annie, do you have any?
I did not go, Pam, did you want to report out on the finances subcommittee meeting? It was last Friday, I think, and I, did I?
It was either two Fridays ago maybe?
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't go, sorry.
Okay, took one, that's alright.
It was all, it was, it was budget preview, right?
Yeah. Did Shannon send, how, how, did she send an email about it?
She did, no.
How do I know?
I think she sent me a text that just, hold on, let me just.
It was a good kickoff, I think she was saying, or someone else.
They went over the schedule, because I know that Brendan referred to it at.
Yep, and you have the schedule on the back of your agenda?
Yep.
You guys were talking about.
Yeah, so in addition to the usual budget kickoff, here's how the year's shaping up in that sense. We did have Jason Waldron come down and participate, which is, we really never had facilities manager do that, but it was interesting because it touched two areas of collaboration. One, the, we've been working with the Town of Essex, as you all know, about the green grant program, where the towns allocated two straight years of funding for energy improvements over at Essex Elementary to help us extend the useful life of the building while we're kind of working on Memorial School. And so he has had some experience, Jason, at Hamilton Wenham with that, and talking about different ways to structure the partnership that make the most use of the grade. So that was a good conversation, a good way to get everybody talking. Right now, Town of Essex has a priority in the town side, they, they're gonna be addressing, so a little bit more future planning, but that was good. And then also, I don't know if he's come to a school in the committee meeting, but among his prior experiences is facilities management in an athletics capacity. Where he ran the Harvard's athletic complexes up with facility management standpoint and other stuff in professional sports. So, so he's been very quick to work with Jordan Medjett and the athletics director, and also talking with principals, and also with me and Pam, just about where we're at with those facilities and turf fields. And so it happens to co, to align with the fact that we're just entering budget planning season anyway, and typically, you know, as we've talked about, you know, district improvement plan, long-term capital planning is something that we started to do in the facilities department, but it's not fully where it needs to be, and part of that's been getting a person who's really got experience and capabilities there. So he was able to talk at the collaboration meeting a little bit about where we're at with turf fields. As you know, Highland Field is part of, is a district asset, whereas Brook Street is on the lease agreement that we're responsible to manage, like the footbridge, and like both schools, but is part of a, you know, there is a joint partnership with the Town of Manchester that uses Brook Street. So just a good opportunity to get those conversations kick-started, because we first talked about loosely in the past, you know, we're getting to a point of needing to start doing some planning there. So he's been very quick to get fresh assessments of field conditions and plans there. So that was another topic of conversation. And so I think as we kick off the budget season, you know we always have capital as a, one slice of what we look at, and I think that's gonna be the case again this year, and probably will be talking a little bit about the turf fields again, with maybe a little bit more detail. So stay tuned on that. So that came up in the collaboration conversation.
It's a big chunk of it.
Yeah, yeah, we monopolized the meeting.
No, it's okay.
Well, the, you know, and it's probably because the budget phase is still very early. Oh, and then the other thing that came up was that there is a proposal potentially to refinance a high school, small bond. Refinance the big high school bond many years ago, and we haven't evaluated that proposal yet, but that's something that we kicked off through, in the past, through a working group of both towns. So I learned of that, them to that, and that may be something that we reinvigorate that working group to look at, whether there's some savings there, which is always good. So.
I'll take my question offline.
You sure?
Yeah. Those are, I think those are all the things we have.
Yeah, we spent another good chunk of time on building project updates because we were anticipating the steel.
Yeah.
And we're wrestling with the issue of what to do with the scoreboard.
Oh.
Scoreboard that came down, up Brook Street Field is town property, not our property. It's going to be declared a surplus, given an opportunity if anybody wants to come and take it, and if not, it's gonna be destroyed. But that's gonna go through work selection, so they're gonna have a.
Okay, yeah.
That's taken some time, actually, to wrestle down.
So it came down in the storm, is that?
No, they had to take it down to put the access road in.
Oh, okay, alright, I was thinking the wind's.
I'll give you a shorthand version. When they took it down, we realized it hasn't really ever worked and hasn't been used in many, many years. So we were, they were trying to preserve it, thinking that it was something that was part of our daily play.
Right.
And, and asking around about how we should store it, where we should store it, it came, come to find out, it doesn't work, nobody uses it, nobody's going to be looking for it.
Right.
But yet, somebody paid for it and it got put up, so it's gonna go through the declared surplus, which will pass through work selection.
Okay. Interesting, okay, good. And we have a budget calendar coming up, our first initial fiscal year 20 budget discussion is Tuesday, November 19th. Just making note of that. And then presentation tentative budget to the school committee is Tuesday, December 3rd, so.
You're gonna take us the issue of the date?
Pam, this is, yeah?
The 19th, can we discuss the fact that the 19th is the same day as the Manchester?
Yeah.
Town meeting.
Town meeting? Do we need to move our meeting date?
Yeah, we have a logistical issue on the 19th, do we? Would we like to move our meeting from? What do we usually do in these situations, do we just move it to the following?
Pam was saying that maybe move it to the 20? Six? No, I'm in May.
The 26th?
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-six is the second, is the next Tuesday.
And that's how, that's Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, so she was wondering how everybody would be.
I'm okay with that. Does anybody?
I will likely not be able to come.
Okay.
Are you here?
I'm here.
I don't believe we need to make a motion to do this, so.
No, I think she checked with Shannon.
Okay, yeah. Pam, do you want to check with Shannon, or do you want me to send something out?
I'm gonna put out a meeting invite to all of us right now.
Okay.
So that way there we can get a count, and we can all go check.
Okay, because that's a big meeting, and it's also a big meeting.
And that's 6:30 here.
Yep, so stay tuned.
Oh, these are 6:30, otherwise.
Yes, is that, I think that's correct.
I think it works, yeah.
Okay, so that's. And Pam, all of these dates are, that are on this budget calendar, it's start times?
Except for the hearings.
Except for the hearings?
It's time for our school committee meetings now, so yes.
Okay.
Did I, did I miss that? No, no time's on there. But we have to make the correction, the 50th is the Wednesday, sorry, I was looking at the line below.
Yeah.
Okay.
January 15th?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only conflict I'm seeing with the 26th is it's the student-teacher basketball game, but I think we'll be able to.
Okay. Okay, so we're good with finance, moving right along, policy committee, we do not have a report, and negotiation team, no report.
Just wanna mention, I guess, the.
Oh, sorry.
Just, no, just real, real quickly, I don't know what it would fall, the fifth and eighth grade, I.
Oh.
The task forces?
Yeah.
Oh, it's.
I'm sorry?
Conversation, no, so I was just saying, the, the fifth and eighth grade task forces, just from the perspective of the fifth grade task force, there have been some meetings, it seems to be now selecting pretty quickly where the teachers are in contact with a couple of the possible local organizations that can do it. And I guess the eighth grade, it seems like they've moved, I was gonna say, today. Oh yeah, here's what we're planning for the week line, it's like, ooh, jeez, it's all squared away. The one thing, I guess, that's maybe interesting is coming up with, because the discussion has been somewhat experimental for both. Not experimental, but we're trying things for the first time, and oh, well, maybe this'll be good, or maybe we're gonna go other ways. Just naming, probably, and fifth grade task don't experience, or eighth grade cap, or something, I guess I'd just ask if, I don't know if the, the administration, if the principals have thought something about how to call it, because it's been kind of task force, but it might be interesting to see what we're up with.
I'll follow up with them, hasn't been much discussion.
There, there probably isn't, but it's interesting, I just, we're kind of like, oh, well, we'll let it become the Children's Island trip, if that's the choice, and then if we change it, we're, so anyhow.
The idea of a generic fifth grade experience?
Yeah.
Rather than needing it after the thing that it is.
Yeah. And really, the fifth grade especially, a big part of the discussion, I think, is picking one of the eighth, is the goal of combining two classes. So there's logistics involved with two schools, worth considering one. It was good, going well.
Awesome.
That was just all.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great, thanks for that update. Okay, continue business. Are we ready with Julie's presentation, annual assessment review?
Julie.
We good to go? Okay, do you need the overhead?
Um, I think I'm good, but do you want to do the rest?
It's up to you.
Okay.
We could.
Usually you do just a little bit.
Just a little bit. So tonight I will be talking about data across the district, so we'll be looking at grades three through eight and the high school data. But we'll also be looking at school and district accountability through the new accountability system, which I'll highlight just a little bit. I want to, I might be in-depth in terms of what that new accountability framework looks like last year. So I'll just give you the highlights, and we'll move forward. If you look on the left-hand side of this slide, which you may not be able to see, but we will post this so you can read it a little bit more clearly. On the left-hand side is the legacy language in terms of how our students were termed by their state data. So we had this advanced provision, needs improvement, and warning. In the new assessment, we're looking at different definitions and different number schemes, if you want to think of it that way. Exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. And the real differential there is between meeting and partial, in terms of a student who performs at grade level would be considered meeting or exceeding. A student who's performing a little bit below grade level in whatever criteria is being assessed, that's where you'll start to see some differentiation in terms of scoring. So for parents who are receiving parent guides from the schools, that's really the determination factor that you'll be looking at in terms of your child's scores. You'll also be getting a form that explains this in more detail, in terms of what exceeding expectations looks like and the language around that for ELA and math. And then there'll be some descriptive language around science, which is being reported in the old accountability system because they haven't, the full transition hasn't happened huge though. So depending on which grade level you're looking at, high school, they're still reporting out in the legacy language. Grades three to eight, they're moving into this whole new accountability language. So depending on which kids you have in which schools, you might see different reports, I guess is the point I'm trying to make with that. And some students may be presenting differently, depending on where they are in the trajectory of this reporting mechanism. So maybe one of your children has taken the previous old MCAS and scored in advance, but now might be scoring in partially meeting targets. What does that mean? What does that transition mean? And basically, it shows a distinctive transition from the old standards to the new standards and the level of change in terms of content that may have happened when those standards transitioned over. And so it's really about taking a look at that, at your child's item analysis, which also runs along the bottom of that pamphlet that comes home, because you'll get a really good sense of the types of questions that were being asked, and where your child fell on that scale. And you also have the capacity to go online to take a look at some of those questions as well. So there's also a question bank, if you ever got interested in terms of what was the question asking for. Sometimes people will look at that just to get a sense of, what did the question ask? Or, you know, where are we in the spectrum of some of these content areas that were being assessed? So I'm going to jump into data here, obviously, I know those, these numbers are a little bit tough to read, so everyone here, you have this in your packet. The memorial data, which should be first in your slide, shows on the left-hand side of this grid where our students fell in terms of ELA, and then in comparison to the state. And this is just a grade three grouping, but what I like beneath that is each particular grade level and the data aligned with it is sectioned out here. I didn't want to give you 15 different slides of different data points. I thought the summary at the bottom is a little bit more self-explanatory. So if you take a look, you'll be able to get a sense of where our students were meeting and exceeding their expectations in grade three ELA, grade three math, grade four ELA, grade four math. I want to give you a couple of minutes to take a look at that, and I can answer any questions you may have. But basically, our third grade students are, you know, students who are first taking this exam. So it is a new world for them in that sense. Students do get more comfortable with the test over time. This is the first time our, our particular students are taking this level of exam, you know, in kind of a high-stakes environment. And they do really well, considering a lot of the shifting and changing that has to happen in order to accommodate for that. So Memorial is grades three to five, and you'll see grades three, four, and five data. And that's because our, obviously, we're not assessing our students in K-1 and 2, so the assessment begins in grades three, four, and through five. And in grade five, our students are then at that point taking ELA, math, and science. So it's the first science exam that our students take with regard to MCAS. Okay, and the next page is Essex data. And we also have a similar scale on the bottom, in terms of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA, math, and science. And at the bottom, you will see, or close to the bottom, grade five, the three scores for ELA, math, and science there, and broken out over the course of the different number scales.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I apologize for not.
That's okay, you see down here?
Yeah, so.
Down there?
Yeah, so this, is this an aggregate?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the things that kills me when we look at these numbers, we're looking at this snapshot of Essex Elementary School on the left.
Yep.
And it all adds up to 100. And this was like third graders that took this, but there aren't even 100 third graders. So each point is actually like less than a kick, right?
Well, I can have a look at it if you go to this next page. That's where the accountability data comes into play. And so the accountability data really, I think, takes your question and puts it into play. And so it gives us a sense of how our students do over the course of the school year in each content area. ELA, math, or science, those are the three that we assess through the MCAS exam. And then it talks about student, the growth, the growth of students over time. So the growth of students from grades three to four, or four to five, and reports it out that way. So that's not against 100, well, it's each individual student's score playing into this overall number scheme. So that gets a little bit more intricate into the weeds, if you will, in terms of where we are showing growth, or where we need to do some remediation, or how our students are doing over time in cohort data. So when I put this slide up, we're really looking at, on the left-hand side, Essex data, and on the right-hand side, Memorial data. These are both K-5 schools, and it's really just a sense of how their school data is playing out within the school, and also across all schools in the state in the same grade band. So it's a lot of numbers, I completely understand that. And I guess what we're doing at this point, and we're doing it in our K-5 curriculum team, but also in our six to 12 department head structure, taking a look, breaking down all those questions and getting a sense of what each content area demand is or should be, and then making some curriculum adjustments to support the growth that we want to see for our students. It's a lot of numbers, a lot of playing about, and it's really a lot of analysis at this point, of trying to make those determinations. So what I try to do is take all those numbers and give you some language.
So can we start, can we go back to this accountability data summary?
Yeah.
And I want to look at this in a way that's positive and not, you know, like, I just want to know what it says. So if I look at the bottom of the sheet, right, it says percentage of possible points.
Yes.
And there's a big difference between those two schools. Can you explain what the percentage of possible points means for, for me as a parent or as an interested person?
Yes.
And then what does the last criterion reference target percentage? I mean, do other people understand what this means, or my?
It's really hard to understand what it means, so I, believe me, at, at my level and people in my position, all over the state, I think, have taken some real time and tried to delve into this new accountability system, we're a year or two of it. So if you just start from the top of the page, I'll begin from the top to the bottom, and hopefully this will answer other questions that you have. What the state assesses us on is achievement growth, achievement at the school level, growth of student in the, in their own particular growth, me against myself.
So it's you, not you, not four kids in the grade three?
There is a place for that too, so I'll show you where that is. So, and there is a place for that against the state. Yep. In this page as well. So from the top of the page, what they try to do is do an overall classification of, does this school district require intervention from the state with regard to any of its subgroups? Whether it's special ed, regular ed, you know, we, free and reduced population, Spanish Latino, it depends on what subgroups each town has. And so those, just, those differentiations are made. And then our cohort data, based on all of these different subgroups, is compared to the state data in the same grade level. And across the state, within the school. Okay, I'll get into that. So all that data is combined, and then it's determined, okay, well, this, this particular school, and I'll just use Essex as an example, is making progress towards its expected targets within the range that the state sets for us. Okay, so wherever our baseline data was at the beginning of this exam in 2017, we've made some growth against the expectation that the state made for us. So that's where that particular point comes in. Then, as you're kind of moving down here, the annual criterion reference. Then, as you're kind of moving down here, the annual criterion reference target points. In 2018 was seventy-two percent, and in 2019 was thirty-eight percent. So that's when we start to say, okay, so what happened? So what are we looking at in terms of data and what does that mean? So what we've also come to learn is that they've weighted these two different years differently in the spectrum. So they're taking the first year weight of 2018 and they're putting that weight in the overall spectrum at forty percent and comparing it in this giant equation against the 2019 weight, which is at sixty percent. So what they're trying to say to us in this way is your most current data in this particular school year, the current year that you're looking at, weighs more heavily on your school percentile than the year before. Because they're looking for growth over time. So that's why our percentage jumped down from, do you know what I'm saying? Our percentage jumped down in that sense. And then they say, all right, now we're going to compare your school to every other school in the grade three to eight band across the state of Massachusetts. And then we're going to take your data and compare it to every other school in that band, and you come out at seventy-two. So Essex comes out at seventy-two based on all of the different data sets within this report. And this report is about seven pages long, so there's much more data underneath this cover sheet. And then they'll, then they're taking a look at the data and saying, all right, where is the achievement of students in terms of ELA in the aggregate, which is all students? And then in the subgroup that they're now assessing us on a little bit more differently than they had in the past. And that's called our high need subgroup. So they're saying, in the aggregate, your students are scoring X, Y, Z. And in the high need subgroup, your students are scoring X, Y, Z. Our expectation is that you will move this high need subgroup up as much as possible. And that will give us a criterion reference point for that.
Is the high need subgroup that you're referring to, is that the lowest performing students?
Yes. So our lowest performing student subgroups in this town, based on just the different types of subgroups we have numbers for in the school system, are two. Are, one is special ed and the other is pre- and reduced lunch or low income. And so what they're looking at is that those two different types of students and their scores and how we're helping our students meet the expectation at the grade level. So, yes.
Are there other subgroups that we may not have that would also fit into?
Yes, ELL, that year levels. There's a subgroup for Spanish Latino, Asian. There are just different sub, there are just so many subgroups. It's just, we don't have the population to have all of these other different subgroups.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
My editorial comment is they've tried to create a scorecard. And the scorecard, unless you spend hours diving into everything beneath it, the zero to four is a rating that you receive based on the points that you've scored.
Right.
So this is like a summary score on this top sheet. And I think the major takeaway, not to jump in on Julie, is like this, I had to really oversimplify it because I was getting lost in the weeds.
Yeah.
Old test, our high-scoring students carried our achievement level.
Yep.
In this new system, that's great that you have a lot of high-performing students.
Yeah.
But that doesn't matter so much anymore.
Yeah.
It matters that you move your lowest performing students forward in the expected, at the expected rate set by the state.
So this is all about reading improvement, not necessarily about where we are in absolute terms?
Yes. Which is a huge shift in terms of how MCAS used to be. So, and that was up to 2017, that was the old, the old way Pam just described. And this is why we're, we're really looking at how this data plays out over each school and, you know, K to twelve, so that we can make sure that we're doing the things that we're expected to do.
So four has exceeded, one is no change, two's improved and three is met target?
Yes.
But what's at stake if you don't, so I don't want to say annually yearly progress because that was the old, old system, but it's kind of the same idea.
Well, it's really not that old. It is kind of the same idea.
But what's at stake if we don't, if we don't meet our goals?
Well, a few things could happen. We could, in this place where it says not requiring assistance or intervention, I mean, there are districts, fifteen percent of districts fall in that category where they do need intervention. The majority of districts don't, and we're obviously in the majority, so, but that, you know...
But there's no dischaper seventy money that's tied to poor performance or...
No, no. No, in fact, it would make us target our, the funds we do get more to our lowest achieving population. So they would, they would kind of push us in a direction where we had to take our grant funds and to do more intricate work with that.
May I ask one, just one more question of clarification? So we, we say that there are these two groups, special ed and low income.
Yep.
But there are also students who are not performing as well, who may not fall, who may not be in sped and who may not be low income. So we're also accountable for those kids. And that, how does that show in the data or is it the individual?
That shows in the aggregate, yeah, that shows in the aggregate data.
Yeah.
And that, that does always come out as well. And, and we do look at that. We try to figure out which students are students who are falling beneath that meeting expectations target and try to support them as much as possible.
I think our size, it helps us to be able to do that, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Thank you, sorry.
I think the other thing to note, and this isn't really, this is what we talked about at the beginning in terms of the catalyst behind the letter, which is part of our accountability is also attendance. And chronic absenteeism is an area that we need to do some work in. And that's impacting our accountability level as well and growth. You know, are we moving the kids consistently forward, even the kids who are high achieving? So it's taking it off that statistic of ninety percent of our kids are, you know, proficient in advanced to great. But are they coming to school on time? Are you helping kids grow from the point at which you receive them in each year? So it's a little bit more, it's more of a challenge for us and it's a shift in our work, I think. But I think it's consistent with the broadening of the scope of work for schools, so it's interesting.
So there's accountability to moving high achieving kids off of...
Accountability moving everybody forward.
Yeah.
I think there's diminishing returns if you get closer to...
Right, it's hard. We never talked about that, right?
Right, I agree with that.
But to a question you asked a couple of weeks ago, it does super-focus you on the kids who are having the hardest time succeeding?
Regardless of their income or their designation? But it's forcing you to focus there more instead of just focusing on top. Sorry.
That's okay. And that does explain the chronic absenteeism letter, that people are, you know, sort of wondering what this is all about. It's really about highlighting some of the discrepancies we're seeing in terms of student, student attendance and, and, you know, just seeking for that, which is part of some of the work that we have to, to make that happen. So we could look at numbers all day long and some of us do that. But what I, what I kind of do, and this is the work that I'm doing, you know, K to twelve, is taking a look at where are the standards, what it, what's being taught? How are we looking at it? How are we supporting kids throughout this process? And so our strengths, if you look in a, you know, K to twelve spectrum, or K to ten really, tend to fall in vocabulary, reading and main idea, or main idea in reading, identifying figurative language and inferencing, understanding nonfiction and text structures, poetry, how poetry functions. And, and doing some work in terms of character traits, identifying feelings in characters in books that are being read. And then determining phraseology in words and vocabulary and things to that effect. So what we're noticing though, in terms of areas of need, and we consistently have seen this now, I would say for the last three years, is writing in terms of idea development and conventions. But when I looked a little bit deeper and had some more conversations with people who are looking at this data as well, what I think we're noticing is that it's not just the writing that we're looking at, but it's the writing about reading. And that's kind of what this assessment does. It does a comprehension assessment on your reading capacity and then your ability to translate it into writing. Some examples I was able to pull out of the, you know, over the course of the grade levels was how an author describes a topic and how a student can cite evidence to identify an author's use of words or how an author is creating and organizing work. And then another component would be how students write narrative in terms of, not the old school narrative writing, where you would write a short story and that was what narrative writing was. But this is how students are writing about characterization in text. And so how are students able to take with their reading at grade level and then turn it into an analysis of the character trait and write it? So it's a different kind of writing because it's really focused on the, the text complexity that the students are reading. So it's no longer kind of those weird arbitrary essays that kids are writing in ELA. It's more of a literary analysis component and then putting that into writing. And those literary analysis pieces are done with more and more complex texts. And so that's the conversation that we're having in the district. So what does complex text really look like? How are we reading? What kind of work are we doing around writing? And how are those things connected? Because that's what this assessment determines. How do we do all those things? All right, so one of the things I pulled out of the standards to kind of exemplify that point was, and this is a question we have all the time in the district, so what about writing? How are we going to do with writing? What are we doing about writing? But in order for us to really have writing, we have to be able to read it. Because it's the reading that offers us the vocabulary and the characterization and the sophistication of language. And in addition to that, the demands of the content, whether it's science or social studies or ELA. So right there in red, I really wanted to fill that out, talk about it a little bit. Students are advancing through the grades levels and they're expected to meet each year's grade level specific standards and retain that information and then bring it to the next grade level and build on a set of skills and strategies that are expected to be mastered in each and every grade. And that's the work that we're talking about. So it's a long conversation, obviously, you keep hearing me talk about it. But it's a really distinctive point that I wanted to make. So it's not about just being able to read fluently. It's about what you're doing with your reading in terms of building it into your writing and your analysis of text. And that goes across the board. That goes into any content area when you're really thinking about it. So you can read all those notes later on, but I really just wanted to highlight that point. When we took a look at our math, we had a great conversation around what are the strengths in terms of our math skills. But what we're also doing and we will be doing in December is taking a look at how we can align our math curriculum with what the standard's expectations are. And we'll be doing some deeper work in that. But what we're finding right now is that we have strengths in beginning fractions and the identification of fractions, measurement, geometry, and multi-step problems with whole numbers. But what we're also finding is that we need to work deeper in terms of identification of mathematical facts and patterns of multiplication. So really identifying what those multiplication scores are. We talked about this at the high school level just recently in our, in our, I'll talk about that in a minute, but in our department meeting. But we're noticing some of these things playing out over time. So whether it's equations, multi-step equations, or fractions, or mixed numbers and decimals, they're all dealing with the same type of math. And we're seeing it kind of play out and we're going to be working on that over the course of the next year. You're not, you have personal experience? Yeah, so I, I'm finding in our conversations, it's great to be able to have that conversation at the six to twelve grade level, but also at the K to five level and make that distinction in terms of what we need to do. In elementary science, our data summary, we talked about strengths in terms of designing solutions, which is a great skill in the science and engineering standards. Biology, Earth and space, erosion and landforms, Earth, space, and simple machines. Identifying and designing problems and reflecting solutions to meet the wants, which is great because that's really, you know, a deeper type of critical thinking and I'm super happy about that. What we're finding that we need to support, and this could even just be through the maneuvering of units over time, you know, moving units at the end of the year that are taught to the beginning of the year, we'll have to get a sense of that, is Earth's rotation and the axis rotation.
That's, that's been, yes, we've talked about that for a long time.
It does. I, I think it's a conceptual block. I think it's a tough concept to learn at such a young age. So when it's revisited over time, that's when I think we'll get a sense of, you know, are we able to conceptually understand that? Energy is also a challenge, but that's not unusual either. Energy is a, is another conceptual idea. Renewable resources and nonrenewable resources. So understanding what those two things are, physical science and gravity, understanding science and technology in terms of how products, parts work together. And sometimes the analysis of data, which could go back to our math conversation previously. So really taking a look at that across the board. Any questions on elementary?
Yes.
Yes.
I know we've talked in the past about, you know, eighth graders and algebra. Are there, is there, are their brains ready? So I mean, I'm just wondering, you know, you're talking about these concepts that can be difficult for kids to grasp.
Yeah.
Some of them are hard for me to grasp, but is the expectation realistic in terms of, you know, your understanding of a kid's brain development and when they can really understand some of these things? Are we realistic in the, in the standards about, yeah, most kids...
The new, the new standards came out and they, they are very challenging.
Yeah.
There's no question about it. I will say that our students in No Adam outscored just about every other district in the state in terms of the science. So I do think conceptually, our students can do it, but our teachers are doing a lot of work to make that happen. I mean, they're really doing a lot of work to engage with those science units and, and create that for students. So I don't think it comes naturally. I don't think it's instantaneous knowledge. I think it has a lot to do with the level of work people are doing to make that happen really well.
So there's a lot of work that has to happen in pre-K and K to kind of...
Absolutely, yeah, to build the knowledge.
Right.
But just even at the grade level, you know, I mean, when you read through those standards, you've got a really good sense of how deep and, how deep the expectation is. All right.
Oh, I know, but...
Quick question, Julie. This deck is obviously different than the one, because you updated it today.
I did, I added more...
You're going to send it to us?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I wanted to put more data in, I decided to...
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I'm following along and I know that you popped some stuff in today, so.
Yeah, all right.
And I think we should try to hold big picture questions till the, I like that we're, this is a lot to unpack and I'm really glad we're all asking. But if you have a big picture question, let's hold it till the end just to kind of keep it because we have a lot of stuff to cover. But I think it's good to ask slide-specific stuff because it's pretty detailed, so. All right.
All right, so moving into our middle school. Similar, if you want to take a look at the data here, I can talk to you a little about some of the trends that I saw. And if you want to jot your questions down, we can answer them. I can do that. In terms of our middle school data, our middle school is now being scored within three to eight band of schools. So no longer do we have a middle school that's just compared against other middle schools like it used to be. It's now pushed into this three to eight grade band, which makes it a little more difficult because of the differentiated expectations and learning in each grade level. So eighth grade science, it's way different than fifth grade science. Eighth grade math, much different than third grade math. And so I think that that's something that we've asked the state to really consider in terms of how they're using data and sharing it out in terms of accountability because that is kind of a really big question to have, and I think we all have it. So what we're seeing here in our accountability is, is some of those questions that I just said. They are making moderate progress towards our targets. And our targets are statistically higher in terms of what the grade level expectation is. And so we're seeing some areas of need that we're focusing on this year. So we have our elementary work that we're doing in ELA. That's part of the K to eight task force. And we're also looking at math in terms of, you know, what kind of curriculum structure do we have? Do we need additional support? We haven't updated our curriculum in a while on math, so what is that going to look like? And what are their expectations, the standards, and are we able to really address those with what we have? So we're working with the math chair and making, you know, taking a look at that and making those determinations in terms of who needs what in scale. Again, people working really hard and trying to make sense of what some of the needs may be, whether it's ELA, math, or science. We also have a new science curriculum that we implemented at the middle school level. And so we're excited about that. And STEM scope seems to be really positive in terms of where we are in science. And understanding and unpacking new curriculum is something that, you know, takes time as well. And so what we're noticing is that we are do, we are in a place where we need to take a look at the infrastructure, but at the same time, we need to compare it realistically in terms of where we are as a district, but also... but also where we are in this pool across the state. And that's what we're doing. So one of the things that we noticed in terms of our strengths, and I separated out sixth grade from seventh and eighth because sixth grade is a transition year. So we have two elementary schools coming together at the sixth grade level, so I wanted to work with that data a little bit differently. And our strengths, what we're finding are our strengths in narrative text structures, identifying the central main idea of passages, which is really tough actually. As students get older, they're reading more dense texts. Figurative language, understanding characterization and development of plot, character traits and creative writing. Seventh and eighth, we're noticing that language develops in the text structure. And so our students' conceptual knowledge is starting to develop around central ideas and plot, whether it's through differentiated novels or deeper novels. We're also seeing some growth in our Greek and Latin roots and influencing, which is great. All that. What we're noticing that we need is, on a big surprise, writing idea. And so it's topic idea and the grammar and conventions, which we're seeing statistically across the board. And so when I looked into those essays a little bit deeper in terms of what's being asked of a middle school student for writing, they're asking students to explain character traits of heroism and use evidence from the text to support your understanding of that theme or that concept. So they're taking the literal from the elementary, applying it to a conception or a theme, and asking students to write about that. They're asking students to identify things like mood and tone, which is a different kind of reading and a different kind of understanding. How a character responds in dialogue in a story and how that can relate to an overall message or an idea. So goes a lot to it, a lot of figurative language and some pretty deep text expectations. And hard, you know, students are reading more challenging texts at this point. They're in the content area and learning situations. So they're moving from one course to another and trying to grapple with that and those demands of that content at the same time. So in math, we're finding that our strengths rely, our strengths rely in certain probability, ratio, proportion, and the rational, irrational, and square root number, parts and number system, which is really great. We're also finding though, on the same vein, is that we need to do more work in ratios and proportions and two-step equations, the distributive property, property of operations and operations with fractions and functions. Which really says to me that we need to continuously look at fractions back through the grade levels and then look at our use of multiplication over the course of grade levels. Question?
I'm assuming it's because it came up as a strength at one grade level and maybe it was at another.
It did. So it came up as a strength in the sixth grade and then a weakness in the eighth grade. But it's the, it's kind of the intensity at which students have to work on ratio and proportions in the eighth grade versus learning it as a new concept, if you will, in the sixth grade.
Questions getting harder.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. Moving into high school, our data summary show, and I have to tell you, this is where the data gets super interesting in terms of how accountability is reported at the high school. Our CPI score is at ninety-eight and our expected goal is a hundred. So just to give you a sense of like the level of, we could show a decline at the high school in data because we didn't move from ninety-eight to a hundred. Yeah. And this is, we always used to say this in theory, you know, back in the day, like, well, what if you ever were ninety-eight? Yep, but we're here. So we're at ninety-eight, getting to a hundred. It could actually show a decline if we have two students fall below, yeah, meeting or exceeding expectations or proficient, because we're using a score scale. So our students are doing well. It's just really taking a look at what are our needs in terms of how kids transition out of eighth grade up through ninth grade into tenth grade. And so we're seeing our strengths at the high school in writing. So in tenth grade, we're able to do more depth in terms of analysis for literature and writing, understanding plenty of evidence, research, meaning, context, tones, syntax, and all of that. But we also need to work on the inference component, but this was in one or two questions. So it wasn't like a inference problem at high school. It was more like you had two questions where we were close to the state average. Give you a sense of that now. Math strengths, geometry, oh. Math needs functions. So we're showing up again in terms of functions and properties and dealing with multiples and exponents. So that goes back to our multiplication component from earlier. In science, our strengths, so biology and genetics. Our needs, evolution in biodiversity, biochemistry, inference in scientific statements. So it's kind of another inferencing thing, but it's reading in science now. Two-step process problems that we saw showing up in math. Now kind of looking at how that played out in science as well. If that makes sense. So you can see some themes emerging, which is what we try to do with this data and try to identify how can we support students throughout the grade levels on those grounds.
So these topics are, they're the areas where there would be additional focus needed?
Yeah.
And that's to get from the RE side?
Yes. And so you have to kind of keep that in your hat too at the same time. Like, you know, we're talking about all these things, these areas of need, but we're also talking about moving the scale from ninety-eight to a hundred in some places. So, you know, good all of those.
I think a great example is high school completion rate. Probably never going to be a hundred percent every year forever because of people's circumstance, not necessarily because they're not passing MCAS or able to complete coursework. You can't, I can remember a student who hasn't graduated for that reason in years. So it's going to be difficult for us to be showing growth in graduation cohort every year. So we're going to have, and then I think one thing that's come up just before you go off into the other set of scores is there's an entire piece of this that has nothing to do with student achievement, but has to do with how we're reporting data. So we're looking closely at our SIMS data and our student information to make sure our absentee reporting is accurate. Because incorrect absentee reporting to the state could create a deficiency. So there's a lot loaded into this that isn't necessarily applicable, yeah, totally applicable to a school such as ours. You know, this is trying to cast a wide net through the state. So we have to just, I feel like I need to work even harder. Every time I think I understand it, we have a discussion and we pick out something new and doesn't quite make sense as to how they arrive at certain numbers. So it feels like a work in progress a little bit. Make sense of it? Sorry. More traditional numbers coming up there.
Oh, yeah. Twenty nineteen AP scores. In twenty nineteen, we had three hundred and fifty-one AP exams that were taken by our amazing students, which is a great number for a small high school. And we had, you can see there's differential here, I don't need to read it all up to you, but this grid breaks out our percentage of scores in the one to two category versus our scores in the three to five category. And here on the left-hand side, we have AP exams in studio art to design, English, language arts lit and language, foreign language for French, Spanish, and Spanish lit, government and political comp, government political science, US history, psychology, calculus, A B, comp sci, A, statistics, biology, chemistry, environmental science, and physics.
What do you want to get in an AP exam?
A five. You want to get a five.
Quick question for statistics. Seven kids took that exam. Did they just, what happened with the, we have no report?
Oh, it should be, actually, let's look in here. I have a breakdown of each, of each score. If you go a couple of pages in, there's some big blue graphs in here.
Oh, I see it.
Yep. So two, two, three, and seven. So we have two degrees in the three range, two in the four age, and three in the five range.
In someplace in here, do you have the amount of kids that enroll in the class versus take the test? Do you have these, is there a section for that?
What I have here is two pages of the AP's report. The breakdown of the school summary in terms of twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, the number of students who took it in twenty fifteen is one thirty-seven. And then we progressively raised our student number of available students taking AP exams. We went up twenty students from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen so that we could give students more capacity to take AP courses and AP exams. But our goal is to open the doors and allow more students to take that type of coursework.
So do you have five hundred and fifty-seven kids took three hundred and fifty-three exams?
I never heard before, I checked.
Does that make sense? Okay. So if you have specific questions, I tried, I did a breakdown here. I took that grid and broke it down in the next three or four pages so you could see how many students took each exam and where the score point range was.
And does this factor into anything that's part of the accountability report?
No, but it is part of our district's profile. If you go online, you can see this grid, but you can't see all these scores underneath. So I wanted to give you the distinctive scores.
I think the interesting thing, the chart that Caroline's looking at that shows the growth in the number of students.
Yep. Right here.
So I know there's been an effort to make them more accessible. So less criteria to get in, less, more kids can take the tests. What I think is interesting is we're showing seventy-seven percent return rate on three or above as opposed to ninety in twenty fifteen. But it's essentially the same number of kids, one twenty-four and one twenty-one, that are scoring the three or better. So I think there's a question of does greater access have an impact on the number of scores above three?
You know, you said, you just said, we're allowing more kids to take the test, but we're actually allowing more kids to take the class.
Take the class, I'm sorry.
Right. I just want to make that distinction.
Sorry, I'm just. You don't have to take the test.
No. You don't.
It's great to offer the coursework to students who are looking to.
And that happened last year, right?
Taking more advanced coursework, yes.
They opened it up?
So we also saw, talked about the fact that, you know, as a district, we want to say it's okay where kids take this class and have fewer reach the three plus. But to be able to articulate that in the report, right, in the profile, that if there's more access to these courses, but that may also result in the fact that not all kids are getting the three plus, right?
Right. Back in the day, just speaking of personal experience, there used to be entrance requirements to AP. So you could closely monitor. And we can have a debate whether that's the better way to go, but you would monitor who would go in to ensure, which would ensure potential better outcomes. I think there is a move on, again, not necessarily a school profile like ours, but schools that have a large number of diversity. Certain groups of students weren't gaining any access. So AP and college board went on a full court press to expand opportunity and try to tear down some of the barriers to even gaining access to college-level material at high school. So our methodology and our reasoning for opening it up may be a little bit of difference, but I think it pretty much holds when you expand the number of students who can have access to it. You may have to just weather through kids reaching and not being necessarily a good fit, but yet they're having a good learning experience by being there.
Do we have any statistics on kids that are in AP courses that end up stepping back from them as they move through the term or the year?
Don't in front of me, but I'm sure that's something that.
Because that might be worth looking at to see if we're setting kids up for something that they're kind of bite off that, you know, may not be of the best fit. So I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but I think that might be something I'd like to see as a committee member, to see where that's wrong.
A quick SAT score summary. This you can find online as well. And this is a distinction in terms of all of our students. They have one hundred and thirty-seven SAT test takers. The average score was five ninety-eight for reading and writing and five ninety for math with an average score of eleven eighty-eight. And students are allowed to take SAT and super score their exams. So for instance, if you have a student or a child who takes the SAT, is not happy with score, they are able to go back and retake the SAT exam, each component in super score, take the scores that are most applicable and use those for college applications, which is a great thing and we highly recommend it in terms of getting practice with that exam is never a bad thing. So that's a lot of data. I know, I feel like it came in here and just hit you over the heads with a giant packet of data. But what we do is use this data for a number of different things. Not just this data, we have a lot of other data that we're building and trying to use as well. But we're looking at baseline longitudinal trends. How do we determine rigor in academics? How do we align curriculum-wise and coherently within the grade level expectations? And looking at critical thinking and rigor in terms of what is a grade level expectation. I mean, a lot of conversations around that this year. What does grade level work look like? And how are we, how are we matching that to the work that we're doing with students in the classroom?
Wait, did we go over the next steps?
Next steps. So because we had such a huge transition in the standards world, over two or three years, we had huge transitions in the major content areas, ELA, math, and science, which is what all of this data kind of flows up into in terms of assessment. So we're aligning in ELA to the standards, aligning in math to the standards, and aligning in science to standards all at the same time, which is a lot of work for a lot of people. And we're trying to figure out where do we need to align and where can we use what we have? Where do we need to build assessments to figure out what we need? How do we use the data? How are we supporting kids in all of that? And so it's a giant conversation that we're having across the district in many, many places. Many places. But we're looking ultimately to create a K to twelve vertical and horizontal curriculum alignment. We need to know that when our students move from A to B, that this has been a content area expectation that's happened up through this particular grade level. So when our students transition to another school, we understand where that, where that is and what that expectation is, especially during the transition components. And we're looking at where do we need to update our curriculum? Where do we need to adopt things? What assessment style do we need to adopt in terms of getting the data that we need? And how can we support and offer interventions for our students? What does that look like in elementary versus middle school versus high school? It's different, we have different schedules, we have different people. You know, how does that play out in terms of the content? And then we're also looking at instructional strategies to support implementation of best practices. So whether it's double poem notes, which is what people are looking at at high school right now, is how is that instructional strategy used to support understanding in content? And then what can we do in the middle schools to help support some of those strategies that we're identifying? We want to teach at the high schools. So it's a big, giant conversation, but it's really about curriculum and instruction and all the different components of those working together. That's what we do. This is the short version. Like I could do this for a whole year.
Glad you like it.
Did we want to go back through the slide twenty-seven, high school slide?
Which one is twenty-seven?
Well, it's in the deck. It's after that. It's after the SAT score summary. No, it's not in here. It's in the one that you sent out.
Oh, okay.
The SAT, or sorry, the high school accountability one that matched the other ones. Because it addresses the absenteeism.
I might have moved it up here.
Is it in this packet?
Is it right here?
Uh, nope. It looks like this, high school accountability. It's in the.
Oh, it's in our, this other little packet.
It's in the little packet.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah. That's this up here, but we'll have a little bit higher, a bigger screen.
It's a little hard to read, but.
Okay, yeah, I know. Okay, so did you have a question about that?
So under the additional indicators, we've got a couple zeros there on absenteeism and advanced coursework completion. Total possible points four for eight, and then we have a zero, zero, zero.
Right.
So I know that Pam was addressing that a little bit earlier. Just was wondering if you can talk to that or if that's.
Yeah. So our, this does not mean we did not have any movement at all, but we didn't have enough movement to give us a score point of the growth that they would want to see within the chronic absenteeism mark. So we are addressing chronic absenteeism. It's a pretty big. So, we are addressing chronic absenteeism, it's a pretty big push, I would have to say, across the district. But we are recognizing that, yes, we do have some issues where students who are absent ten or more times, it could be ten times over the course of the school year, but it still could count as chronic absenteeism. And so, really trying to determine how are we going to highlight this knowledge for people so that they understand ten point, ten days could mean, you know, you have mono, you know, or whatever the case may be, and it really impacted you, but no matter how we slice it with the state, it's still an absentee, is an absenteeism.
So a medical reason does not count?
No. It really does.
So what it's showing you is, students who are categorized as low performing had the greatest gains in chronic absenteeism when our general, general population did not do very well at all.
Right.
So you've taught.
So the kids, we, so ironically, the general population, for whatever reason, has a greater rate of absenteeism than kids who typically you would think were more absent.
So does this fall, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just gonna say, does this fall on the kids, like, so one individual?
One individual over the course of two years, for instance.
Right. This just means the rate of change.
So, if we have a student, we'll use the middle school for example. We have a student in some grade who has ten days absent, then goes into eighth grade and has twelve days absent. That be, that child becomes part of this high needs subgroup, but for chronic absenteeism, not necessarily for content, where that student's score is in content, but for chronic absenteeism. So what we're trying to do is figure out who those students are and, and make some supportive adjustments that way.
Can you talk some of the strategies you're using, because this seems to be completely preventable? And it's been one of the things that came up in elementary schools last year. So what are the strategies we're using, because this, to me, I don't understand it.
Well, we're sending letters home, and it's not a favorite, I think, of people, but we're trying to clarify that this is happening. And it adds up relatively quickly. A school year is a long year, and at, at ten days, it can go by pretty quickly without people noticing it, so we're trying to highlight it in terms of five, so if we're seeing five absences, a letter goes home. And, and we're sending out letters to, to make it more clear for people, that it does happen.
But I don't think we can, I, I think that's a real, I don't know if you, especially in this community, change that, I mean, people have family values of exposing their children to different cultural things and they might.
But is that, is that cause of this?
I would say there's two traps, right?
So, think, think of everything in a pyramid, so for your average student who may be taking, they may be going to Europe with their parents one semester, taking some days off, I'm not being flip, you know, for vacation or family travel, whatever, but family needs is important, that's one, one column of issue. Kids who are school avoidant, kids who have emotional needs, kids who may have other home issues that need to be addressed. We would go through a, a tiered process of referring them to the student assistance team, doing an analysis, creating a plan of support and attendance plan, so there's all of those intervention levels that would coincide with a student who is identified with need. I don't know that we can solve.
No, you can help that one, absolutely, but the other one, I don't think we can.
Right, so there's, there are mechanisms for students who are struggling with getting to school for a myriad of reasons. If it's just a philosophical difference with a family, we're probably not going to win that battle. Then there's also, we have talked about it here on occasion, the number is escaping me, I think it's fifteen, please don't quote me on that, will trigger. If there are other issues at play, the, the need for a CRA, go to court. To, and really, it, it, we've talked about it, it can be perceived by families as being a very punitive and negative thing. What it really does is gets the child in front of a judge and helps the family get resources to help manage what is often a school avoidance or a, a home disciplinary issue with there's some management issues at play. So we would kind of escalate it through our emotional supports tiers.
So I guess the question is, is there something structural here that is preventing kids from getting to school a long time? Do you know what I mean, like? Yeah, that's all, I mean, I'm just throwing that out.
Does tardiness count, or is it just if you're absent for the whole day?
There's a whole level of tardiness.
Does it impact on?
Part of the report too, I believe so.
Just to get trivia, in terms of absolute numbers, chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism is described, is defined as a percentage of students missing ten or more days, ten or more of their days of membership. That includes both excused and unexcused absences, as calculated grades one through ten. And just to kind of take that back to high school, the chronic absenteeism rate in twenty eighteen of all students was eight point six, and in twenty nineteen went to ten point four, which was decline. The high needs went from eighteen point two percent down to fourteen point three. The lowest performing went from, stayed the same in thirteen point eight.
Ten percent of the kids in the high school have chronic absenteeism.
But you have to factor in there, like.
I would say, I just said, I'm sorry.
That's still a problem.
No, it's a problem, but if a kid gets a concussion and can't come to school, that will have a fair amount of those.
But we're going to Europe, I mean, there, there, that's, that, I mean, I get that people think that's important, but you have to understand that it's, has an impact on the kid's learning.
But although the school's not going to provide something for my kid here, I will take her to someplace to get it, and if it affects your numbers, I'm sorry.
I just have to add one more.
But it also impacts their.
Okay, hold on.
It doesn't.
Their education.
It depends on the kid.
It does depend on the kid.
All right, I'm just giving you the side of.
Yeah, no, I get it, yeah.
I just want to point out, those, for instance, my kids had two excused absences last year to go to robotics meets. So that counts toward, they may end up in the chronic absenteeism.
Right, and that, and, or going to St. Collette, you know, college, there were a few cases, there are a lot of things that fall in that bucket, if you think about it.
Another quick question, when do we, when we're talking about underneath that, if that's coursework completion, what is, how is that defined?
So, advanced coursework completion is a whole list that the state came out with in terms of what counts as advanced coursework. We have AP exams, uh, AP coursework here. Other schools have other things, and so, it's basically, have we, do we have a range of students who are doing advanced coursework completion? The answer is yes, but when we're trying to measure, has it changed? No, it really hasn't changed in terms of, we don't have project lead the way or additional other coursework, we don't have as.
So we don't have a cohort that emerges from that?
Right, right, so, we don't have, we do have advanced coursework.
AP doesn't emerge as a cohort?
Right. Advanced, advanced coursework does, it's, it's really not cohort, it's really, advanced coursework.
Something outside of that?
Yes, is happening, but there are additional things as well, like, I can't think of the word, but when you're taking additional college classes as part of a high school.
Chapter seventy four compliance stuff.
No, 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 it's dual enrollment.
Yes, yes, so there are additional ways that you can build additional components to advanced coursework. We're generally doing AP coursework.
So we do have kids taking dual enrollment?
We do, we just don't have enough to kind of move the scale.
That was my next question.
We have a rate of advanced coursework of eighty one percent twenty eighteen and seventy seven percent twenty nineteen.
Right, but it, but she's saying that AP doesn't count, it's, we don't have enough kids doing dual enrollment.
AP is listed.
We have other things like project lead the way that we're looking at to build in some of those components.
AP is counted toward advanced coursework.
Yeah, it is, but we don't have additional outside, like, in addition to all of these.
Right, okay, all right, we can move on.
I said eighty eight percent participation rate.
That's murky, so we need to get some clarification.
Yeah, because that is a little murky, but.
Because we know that our kids are taking AP exams, we just, so.
So I was just, that's why I was wondering about if it's course, advanced coursework completion, if it's AP courses, and we have some kids
Oh, I see.
saying, I don't want to do an AP course, it's very difficult for me, I want to step back and do honors, or I want to step back and do CP.
I think the problem with that, I am seeing that question now much more, I think the problem with a high school in terms of this is also, you're not dealing with the same students in the tenth grade level. Like, so each tenth grade year, you have a whole different range of students, you may have fifty seven kids taking AP exams this year, but thirty seven next year, I'm just making these numbers up. So, that's another way that they can kind of ding you, but it's not because you don't have kids taking the coursework, it's because you don't see a number of kids.
Because the grades are small, so it's really, it's not apples to apples.
Right, like, one hundred kids is totally different in the scale as, as opposed to two thousand.
Advanced coursework is only eleven to twelve, doesn't include.
I have a question.
Oh, well, some students.
Okay, so why don't we, are we done with the presentation? Okay. Thank you so much, Julie, that was great, I think there's a lot of, you did a really deep dive and a lot to unpack here. I would love to have us all get a copy of this version as well, I know you included these addendums. Why don't we go around, we'll start with Sarah, and then we'll move around. Yep.
My question is, so Tricia, so thinking about advanced classes and AP classes, and I know some schools are talking about totally getting rid of AP classes, and last time Tricia was here, she was talking about doing more project based learning and those kinds of things, so how does, how do you see it all fitting together?
You can do all of those things, you can keep AP coursework, which we will do. But project based learning is something that I think is important. I think project based learning is important because what, what I would like to see us do more of, and I've been starting to talk about a little bit, but I feel like we need to get our curriculum laid out first before we really delve into that, although I think we do it twice the faster. Is working across content, we want to teach our kids how to be able to work across content so that when they're going into, and I, I'll use the high school, I'll use the college transition into an honors program. So if you leave a high school and go into an honors program, you be, you may be immersed in this interdisciplinary world for an entire year as a freshman, but I would like our kids to have more exposure to that before they leave high school, so that they understand how to take some of the reading and writing or math or science and work across content so that they have exposure to it and can choose a little bit more wisely what they want to study when they leave here and go to college or pick a career, and that they're not thinking, I'm taking chemistry because I like it, so I have to be a chemistry teacher. They're thinking, I'm taking chemistry, I really like it, but I also really like genetics or biology, and I want to think about how I can work all those things together. And so, I would like to see some more exposure on that front. And I'd like to do it in younger grades as well, I think that kids are pretty ripe for that early on. It's fun, and it's workable, and it's something that we do every day in our world, so we have to teach kids how to think like that as well.
I have another question, I'll probably, maybe we'll come back, I'll let other people pick.
Okay.
I have one, but I really like the project based learning, and we've been talking about that for a long time, so it would be really great if it happens. And it probably will in three years with my help, the timing has gone for me. But anyway. So, the one, the one thing I just want to say, on the high school data here, we show that our strength is geometry, but I just want to point out, do we take into account how many? I, I'm concerned that we have a lot of families that are paying for extra tutoring, and we're getting those scores because of that versus actually having it happen in the school. So I don't want to get a false sense of that our strength is that area, because I do think that, I hear there are a lot of people, and I know one personally, that have spent a fair amount to get their kids to that level. So I just don't want us to think that that is, we need help there, so I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else?
The only thing I want to reiterate is that I'm concerned that we are sometimes expecting kids to do things before they're ready to do it. And I, I wonder if we've pushed too hard because
Because of this.
this community expects more than maybe kids are ready for, so I just, I always just want to be cautious of that.
That, I, I understand that, I, I think that the transition in the standards have pushed this level of expectation further. I, I, I know what you're saying, and I, I definitely can see an uptick in the expectation of what students should be able to know and do at each grade level, and that even starts in kindergarten. Yeah, but it's a, if you can see it in kindergarten, you definitely can see it in fifth grade and eighth grade, so, that's a real thing.
Yeah, I mean, and we're sitting here talking about, you know, they're talking about social emotional health and, you know.
And that, and that's why I think social emotional health is so important, because we need our students to be able to, you know, function and work well, but also, you know, not feel down on themselves if they're not able to, to meet that and kind of, where can we meet students?
Yet.
Don't you think, that's why we need students to help them.
Isn't that kind of the shift of, like, the philosophy of how we're teaching and the, the project based learning, so you're, you're learning
Other skills, yes.
to learn, and you're not doing it because you want to get a ninety nine, or my mom wants me to get a ninety nine. But if that is the, you're, you're here to, you know, get your hands.
This is actually a higher level of expectation from the students. I think we're still developing, I mean, when I look at some of what our colleagues are doing in other districts, any expectations around computational science, schools that have more developed pre-K programs where curriculum actually begins there, I still think we have a long way to go. But you mentioned something that I do think plagues us, which is encouraging students to stretch and learn and experience new things is different than expecting them to perform and get a result that satisfies our scorecard or our perception as parents and adults for what kids should be doing. So wanting them to learn about the rotation of the earth and introducing it, and letting kids who can do it run with it, and those who can't set it aside until they're ready is great. Thinking we're failing, or our kids are failing because they don't answer the question on the test is a different measure. So I think, working with that with staff, I know is an ongoing conversation for you, it's like holding two things in your mind at the same time. Using the information we get on these to see where, where, where we may not be communicating learning and curriculum well and making improvements there is different than saying we're failing because the kids aren't getting a certain number. So you can still be tending to their overall health and wellness and creating a positive environment for them to learn and grow, but still challenging them to reach beyond their comfort zone. It's kind of all in the how.
Yeah, it's too bad we can't report back on that versus this, like, instead of getting this, report back to us.
The state's attempt on SEL is around the chronic, it's, it's things that don't necessarily apply to us or don't actually tell the tale.
I think the chronic absenteeism has a lot to do with bigger districts who are dealing with movement or, I can't think of the word, losing my words now. Transit, transency, in terms of, or, or just being able to, you know, keep track of your students in terms of over the course of the year, how well are they attending, so, I think it looks different in each district, chronic absenteeism looks different in each district, there's no question about it, in my mind.
Speaking of chronic absenteeism, I wanted to just come back to that for a second. Because I thought the letter that you sent to everybody was so powerful, and I know it was hard for some people to read because, you know, there are families who maybe show up twenty minutes late every day and say, well, second grade, it's no big deal, they haven't started, they haven't really started their work yet. And so I think seeing that, how that, all of that adds up is really powerful, and I hope that it did make people sort of think twice about how their schedule's going or what's happening, and that goes, especially in elementary school, those first parts of the day, as a former first grade teacher, are the most important parts, and especially for social emotional learning. And if you have a child who's having trouble adjusting or coming into school or feeling disorganized or having executive function issues or any of those things, if you're showing up late, you're part of the problem.
Oh, showing up late, I totally agree with you.
That's one thing I wanted to say. The other thing I wanted to say, I've definitely been guilty of taking my children out of school to have special family adventures, and I'm very lucky to be able to do that, but when I think about the fact that if they're, what is it, ten days is chronic absenteeism?
Yep, it is.
I mean, that just kind of makes me rethink, you know, my planning. So maybe, it's not that I maybe would totally not go on my trip, but maybe I would just sort of tally up those days a little more carefully or think about it a little bit more and think, oh, gosh, if my kid is, has really missed, you know, a full two weeks of school when I add up all of these little special treats I've had, I just might make me think twice.
I'd like to weigh in on the absenteeism as well. I mean, it's proven that if people are going to work and they're not happy in their job, they're not going to work. So that is, that is a tried and true statistic. If kids are not happy in the culture and they feel supported at their school, and they feel like their presence matters and they're supported in a holistic, welcoming, warm, great environment, they're not going to go to school. So, I think one thing we're not talking about is culture at this school, in our district, and we're talking about vacations, we're talking about a lot of other things. I think it is great for, like you said Pam, to raise the bar and let kids try to meet that, that and, you know, what mark they get. I think that is fantastic, because I don't want to just sort of have kids, you know, settle for mediocrity, I want them to, I think it's fantastic that they should strive for something, and there's a lot of pride in that, but I, I would think that another super important component here is kids being happy, fulfilled, supported in their working environment. This is a learning environment, kids flow and learn and they develop and grow when they feel watered and fed and, you know, supported in their school environment, so I think culture is a huge
I agree one hundred percent.
component of this, and it's something that we're not talking about, we're talking about test scores, we're talking about vacations, we're talking about other things that are not unique to our district. So, I just wanted to put that out on the floor. other things that are not unique to our district. So I just wanted to put that out on the floor and, you know, um, perhaps we can have a discussion about it. So.
It also might just be hard because we are at the, I mean, it's, we are at total full capacity. So it's, it's a different experience that I keep saying that the kids four years, you know, from now are going to get, and the, so it's just, it's, and it's not an excuse, but it's just harder when we've got so many bodies in here to do.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we could do a workup on the profile of chronic absenteeism and how much in our district, you know, how much is home, how much is hospitalization.
How much is my kids when they're feeling sick and they have, uh, we say, geez, now's the time to call yourself out, take a day and be healthy and not go spreading it around. And trying to encourage people to do that at work a lot more often.
I think the, the culture discussion is important, but I think it's, I think it would be helpful to bring in a profile of, of what we're looking at because sometime, sometimes those that aren't really struggling with the problem are the ones that are first to analyze how they could be doing it better. So I don't know if this is an entire problem built on the family that decides they're going to take a trip because it's a good opportunity for the family to go and have learning experience together and have personal and professional opinions that may be accomplished um, on that. But we do have, you know, we haven't talked about it in the assessment review, but we do have a large group of students who are struggling with mental health issues and home family system issues. So I think we should look at the culture, but I think it would also be helpful for you to see a profile of what it really looks like.
Agreed.
In terms of, um, you know, not, there's school avoidance in the culture that I'm not feeling good about where I'm going, but there's also real definable school avoidance, mental health issues that are taking place. Because you're going to see even in our budget, we're meeting and looking to increase counseling even more. So I think what they're trying to get at through the state is really about what we keep talking about in terms of this intervention culture and support culture and social work component that we're doing more and more around. So I don't know that we need to beat ourselves up as a community over the, you know, let's all take a day off together as a family and bond. I think that there's value in that, and I don't think that that's going to drive our numbers off the cliff. But maybe look a little bit at what our community really does look like, because I think we have an image, and then there may be a reality that's different.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah.
I got my list.
All right, you're up.
At risk of being curmudgeonly, I think it was a great report. There's a lot of data.
Yeah.
I felt a lot of it was, I had somebody in, again, curmudgeonly, somebody that I work with that noticed this, don't compare yourself with losers. Well, part of this is, we're doing well. It was kind of like, don't benchmark yourself off where we, off the, you know, what the system was aimed at, which is rate of change. If you're at the median, how do you move upward?
Right.
Um, there were a number of things, like I thought an excellent example was the Samantha Silak paper that you sent out the reference to, where it was like, how do we integrate this new cultural component or something that we're completely missing? And incorporate those change in skills. That was great. Um, and some of this, and maybe it's just because we get these as a school committee over the course of the year, it'd be really good if we could do almost a more balanced, like, yes, this is the academic in this, but also let's compare with, let's, how many of our students are doing sports or involved in things?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And that, that, that just provides a little more balance, especially as you were saying, Caroline, one of the things is, is a lot of outside tutoring, coursework, people going. I don't know if there's any survey of who does that or what percentage of our students are outside tutoring or things like that. That may be, it falls outside of our envelope, so we don't think about it. That may be useful data around interventions. But I really like, again, I come back to, this is one indicator, but it's the whole child. It's the social, emotional. It's all the
There's so many other components to school than data.
Yeah, and I'm like, oh, I wish we spent an hour talking about all those.
Yeah, absolutely. I feel like every year we, we have the data conversation, and we have to have it, but at the same time, there is so much more that goes on. There's no question about it. And then what's so much more we want to do?
Well, let's get data on that.
That you can't get data from in terms of project based, I mean, there are things that we're working on that, that don't fall in this wheelhouse that are just as important.
Because the skills, like you mentioned, are our cultural adaptability, being able to recognize others, and just read a really good article in the Atlantic about supporting to, not necessarily the kids you're achieving are happy, but that they're kind and they give consideration. Like, yeah, okay.
It's a lot of our, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the culture part.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was my, off my soapbox.
One, one question I have is, um, this is obviously a curriculum bucket we're talking about in this whole presentation. We're curbing the director.
Yeah.
I see some correlations, just, I mean, I, I poured through this quite a bit. Some correlations with really strong teachers that I know that are at this school and some really, you know, good data around that teaching cohort, and then some teachers where I know there's some challenges there perhaps, and some, perhaps some numbers to reflect that. Not, not, it's not that, that cut and dry, but I mean, I'm, I'm wondering how we can look at this whole thing and see how, how all of this curriculum is being delivered? What's the vehicle? Who's, who's delivering it? Do we need to make any changes there? You know, really looking?
I, I really, we are looking at that.
Yeah.
I think that's part of the entire story of data in terms of, what do we have? Do we have the right materials? Who's teaching what? How are we offering instruction?
Right.
Yes.
Because that's one thing that I think, you know, you can be getting curriculum all day long, but if you're not connecting with your teacher.
We could buy a lot of things. We could buy tons of things. So it's really about the instruction at the end of the day.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm sure there's a whole component around that. I just wanted to get it out tonight because I think it's, it's really, really important that the students are connecting with their teachers. They're feeling the synergy. They're feeling, um, like they're really loving learning and all of that good stuff. So, okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Thank you so much, Julie.
That's very refreshing. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but it's, it was a really, really good station.
A bath of numbers.
And if you guys have questions.
I do feel like we're still figuring out some of this accountability scorecard.
It probably is new.
Yeah, that's our newest.
Because if AP is in there and it does say it's in there, then I don't know why we're not getting into that.
Listen, if you have a freshman like me, you've got the, you've got the two different reports, like the last year's compared with this year's and everything.
All right.
Hi, thank you.
All right, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
We will move on. We kind of did a building project update. Do we, do we want to cover anything else?
I think we covered it.
Okay.
We, uh, we didn't cover what MSBA was out here for their check-in today, and that one swimming pool.
Oh.
Okay, good.
Okay. So
Did you say swimming pool?
Swimming pool.
For the interest of time, we will move forward. Fiscal year twenty, budget calendar, we touched on briefly. We're going to rejigger that November nineteenth meeting. Um, and any other updates to that of the year, Pam?
I would just say, take a peek. Caroline already picked up that Tuesday, the fifteenth of January is a Wednesday, now it's Tuesday.
Yeah.
Other than that, does anybody see anything that's off or that needs to be reorganized because of conflicts?
Um, did you, in the finance subcommittee meeting, um, talk about visits to each of the board of selectmen and FinCom?
The only one that was, that was requested is the one that's on here, which is January fifteenth, the annual Manchester of FinCom.
Okay, and so were Essex reps at that meeting?
No reps for that one.
Okay, so, um, if we're going to go see Manchester, I would like to go see Essex. Um, so.
Sure.
Did you have a meeting last week?
If we can, um.
Yeah, Brendan just needs to give us a couple of dates.
Yeah. That January fifteenth date on the final calendar is now January twenty second.
It did come up, I think, and, and Patrick was there, just so you know.
Pardon? Fifteenth, twenty second according to Greg's most recent calendar.
All right, um.
Twenty second.
That you have the fifteen to meet with FinCom.
Do we move to the twenty second? I've heard of my calendar for fifteen.
Oh, we have a discrepancy.
Well, you know what? I have to meet with him on this tomorrow. I'll confirm and send you an email. How's that? He wanted the twenty second, but he didn't, I'm happy tomorrow with that, right?
I have fifteen.
Yeah. All right, so that needs, he'll need to correct that on his. I'll let him know.
Fifteen is what I have. I think we talked about twenty second, but ultimately it wasn't going to work for some reason.
Okay. Okay. Because that's my, um, MAS night meeting in tomorrow. Got it? For the fourth year at a Rose School.
Hmm?
It doesn't mark for the people who need to be there.
No, I know. I just, no, I know, you know. I'm just saying, they're kidding. It didn't, it, it didn't match.
Right.
And.
No, it's good.
Did you know?
I'm a stout.
I have too much.
All right, superintendent's report.
Um, I'll start with some awesome news out of athletics. First, athletics is, I think, doing really well this year. Um, Jordan's doing a fantastic job at the program. I was able to catch some games this weekend. We have had a banner fall. All of our fall sports teams made it into postseason play in some form or another. Um, we're getting deeper in, so folks are, some teams are getting eliminated. The girls had a heartbreaking loss on Sunday afternoon. To Lynn Field, right down to the final, I think it was a minute and thirty seconds they scored. Um, the football team is on quite a roll. They're going into, uh, semifinals next weekend against Boston Latin here. Um, and I think we're going to get some press from the Boston stations because we're playing the Boston team. So we're excited about that. The boys played this afternoon and they were, they won. And the girls soccer is coming up tomorrow afternoon. So we are well into postseason, so a very successful first season for Jordan, and just can't say enough about the organization, um, game days. We found a new flight, which is a two o'clock game on Saturday. It's a pretty nice thing. A lot of people have been coming out to support. Yeah, it's just been beautiful.
Is that because of the, that's not because of the mosquitoes.
Triple E.
Oh, it is. They did move it. That's what I thought.
They have to move all the Friday night games Saturday afternoon.
And it's working well for turnout?
Yeah, maybe it's just, I know Tricia really has enjoyed it. It's been good for Jordan. The stands have been packed for the Georgetown game and the the one for it. So it's been great. I think they'll return to Friday nights if they can.
Cheerleaders are there, the pet fans there.
Cheerleaders have been great, yeah. So that's all been going well. So very positive in the athletics department. One of my other good news items was Samantha Silak did write an article recently for the Librarians Journal, and it was on integrating multicultural literature to expand kids' knowledge base. So that's a very positive piece. Um, we're doing as much data gathering. Equity and diversity are a statewide conversation that's taking place at MASSD, DESE. We had a group go off last week to the Equity and Access convening out in Marlboro, uh, just to learn. I think my walk away so far from, from the work that we've been doing is we are definitely on the right track with the structures that we've put in place around, um, the Ruler Program in Yale, because while they are focusing on building equity and access, all of the things that they're recommending you do are around building people's emotional intelligence and their ability to kind of dive down into the root causes and what you were saying, Rachel, build cultures which are supportive of all people, not just targeting any one particular thing or any one type of token item. So we are slowly but surely building our capacity in that area. Our superintendent's roundtable this year has taken on, um, the challenge of trying to build, um, my teacher hat wants me to call it a unit of study, but to build some tools around working with our administrative teams on investigating our own implicit bias and dealing with issues of leading in a time of change. Because I think what we identified on the North Shore is that we are pretty isolated culturally. We've talked about that here before. So how do you create, um, an environment that's engaged in preparing for the future? Because we won't be isolated culturally forever. I mean, change is coming. It's going to come everywhere. So starting to think long term, and we've talked about it around this table, about trying to lay some foundational work to be prepared for change and for the anticipated diversification of our student bodies. Um, so that kind of all goes in the bucket of long-term projects of thinking, and we were really proud of Samantha, um, taking it on herself to publish that article. One just piece of business news is, um, our attorneys are Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller. Uh, you've come to know Andrea Bell over the years as our go-to attorney. She has moved on from Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller. She's going to work for the court system in Boston. So she has kindly referred us and handed us over to Colby Brunt, who will become the new Andrea. So Andrea becomes Colby as of this week. And Colby's fantastic. I've actually had opportunity to talk with her and work with her over the years, um, while working with Andrea and also have some knowledge of her work from prior districts. She's, wish Andrea were staying around. I was really disappointed. She's done great work for us, but I think, uh, we won't miss a beat with Colby stepping in. So hopefully, there'll be an opportunity for you to meet her along the way, maybe around some of, uh, some of the, uh, formation of the secondary unit that may be coming up. We'll keep it in a positive. And I think that was it for today. Just a couple of reports, actually out from today's PD day for the high school and, uh, conferencing at the elementary school. A lot of positive reports, good turnout from parents. Um, people were, uh, very pleased with, um, the conferences, and the high school focused in on, uh, vision of the graduate. So that's moving along quickly. They hope to have an articulated, uh, generalized vision statement um, with some five characteristics come January. And we have reached out, I wish Julie were still here because she's our contact person, to the Creative Education Foundation to work with us on doing some surveying and focus group work to build our strategic plan. So we're on a general timeline right now, and I'll sketch this out for our next meeting, of completing the, uh, vision of the graduate formulation by January and then handing that general framework off to Creative Ed Foundation to do some work with us to gather data to help shape the strategic plan, which we hope to have ready to be unveiled at the beginning meeting at our September meeting next year, our school meeting. Great, so the strategic plan doesn't mean we have to do anything. It's all you guys. No, I think we, we're going to go back to the gentleman from B C we worked with before, and he's a really good data cruncher. But where we want to go, when you think about, um, hands-on learning, when you think about project-based learning, when you think about innovation and creativity and the words and the skills that keep coming up in the discussions with people about vision of the graduate, we thought, going back to the Creative Ed Foundation, who we worked with at the leadership team a few years ago, and Julie worked with them extensively in Georgetown to build some creativity curriculum, and using their, um, their organization, their connections, and their forward thinking to try to craft our strategic plan would be a better fit for us. And I think it's important, it's going to be a bit of an investment. They're quoting us about five thousand dollars right now for their assist. I think it's important to put a third party in front of some focus groups and take some feedback about the school district so that people feel like they can be honest and open, and it doesn't become either a laundry list of things that, you know, one person didn't get or wanted or wished we did, and making sure that the third party can package it for us in a way that we can hear it and act on it in a positive way. So more to come on that, and you'll get to meet the team, um, the Creative Ed Foundation, come the beginning of the year. So that's pretty much on a fast track and exciting work.
Thank you.
And that's it for me.
Uh huh. Thank you, Pam.
Yeah.
All right, um, school committee comment?
I just have one reminder.
Yep.
Um, minding the mind is this month. When is that scheduled?
The twenty first.
So that's the twenty first. We had very few people at the Englander, or we didn't, we, we didn't have a good showing at the Englander presentation.
About thirty.
And so, um, it would be great if we had a better, um, group of people, so if you could just notify people that this is coming, even elementary school parents, it's, you know, we went to the PTO meeting, we were talking to them about this kind of stuff, and a couple of them said, I didn't think I should go to that thing, but I went to one of these things and thought, oh, God, I'm glad I went because now I know what's ahead of me.
You go to the U C L S thing?
No, this was like.
We should go.
I went last, like, the last time to talk about Penny Hub. But, um, sure, you, uh.
True. Would you take any suggestions with how to get people?
Yeah, it's just, this isn't, we're, you know, this is supposed to be very good. I know people in Ipswich who went to it. They loved it. And it's like the launch of AnyHub, so if people could schedule it on your, your schedules and, um, just remind people to come.
Are there like flyers up all over the place?
There are not lines up all over the place. There are no, there are emails that, and we've had a lot of posts, social media posts from the school, but, um, you know, it would be great if folks could.
We should contact, um, Eric Brown.
Good idea.
I was just going to say too, if they're willing to talk to, um, Mike Cronin, I'm sure the Gloucester Times would run an article on it. I'm happy to talk to him on their behalf. I just think they have a good background story as to why they chose this and what they're trying to do with their organization.
Um, okay, I'm texting her.
But if you need somebody to just do the outreach to get out, they'll just let me know, and I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
Great.
It would be nice to just feel good that we got funding from the Spalding Trust, so, um, it would be nice to have a show.
Native Stars was great again, hopefully, also on Sunday afternoon. That'd be good, Karen.
Excellent. All right. Anything else? Um, all right, I just want to mention, our next meeting is November nineteenth. Mark your calendars. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, no.
November nineteenth, I have to remember.
I mean, I'm so sorry. I mean, I'm so sorry.
Twenty six is what we're trying to change it to.
Sorry. I, I, I just.
It is scheduled for the nineteenth.
It is scheduled for the nineteenth. Thank you for that correction. Scheduled for the nineteenth. We are, it is tentative for Tuesday, the twenty sixth, at six thirty, but stay tuned because that's not confirmed yet. Okay, thank you for catching that, Carolyn. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.